Councilmember Snaggy, do you see what we have at forum present?
We do have a forum present.
Forum being present, I now declare this meeting open, but the record shows that that Councilmember John Faust will not be with us to signature because of sickness. This time I'd ask Lon Waters if you would do our invocation.
Lord, we just thank you for all your blessings. Lord, we thank you for the sunshine. Lord, we thank you for the report that some of the employees' families are feeling better. Lord, we just asked you to watch over this meeting, give guidance and direction to our council mayor. Lord, we thank you for their diligence and trying to do what's right for the city. Lord, as we move forward through this meeting, we just ask you to be there or home here and represent. Lord, we ask you these blessings in your name. Amen.
Councilmember Sunny Proctor, would you lead us in our place, please, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have in front of you the agenda that has been presented, and at this time I would entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
So I would like to make a motion to add
Port of all business. Please.
If we would add consideration to change the name of Dixie Street to the new business.
And it is the last thing on your business?
Yes, good. You still want it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda without change.
Have motion and second. Counsel, I'll leave it second.
Take it.
Have motion and second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And the motion is carried. Counsel, I would entertain a motion. At this time, we approve the minutes from the September 30, 2021 Public Hearing Special Committee and the October 4, 2021, President Council Meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as given.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And the motion is carried. Under old business consideration approval of a bid for sidewalk repair project that has been tabled, and I would entertain a motion that we table that for another month.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, same sign, and we will table that for a month. Under item B, consideration approval of ordinance number 2021-23 and 2021-24, request to annex in the City of Jasper, 17.28 acres off of Jeanette Drive. That has been tabled and is not brought back up. I would entertain a motion that we table that for an additional month until our next regular meeting.
Second.
Second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And that motion is tabled until our next meeting. Item C is consideration and discussion of various requests on existing lots, and that motion has been tabled also. And I believe that Mr. Sykman is still working with them, and so I would entertain a motion that we table that for an additional 30 days. All in line for our next meeting.
Sure move.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And it is tabled. Item seven, new business. Request to rezone parcel 030C001 and 030B061. Point 001 consists of 50.33 acres from RA and R1 to a planned unit development property located at the intersection of Highway 15 and 515 and Philadelphia Road. Let's Lon and Waters bring this to us tonight. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council. The developers and family came in and applied for a rezoning, and staff recommendation is based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in Section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the request to rezone the property from RA and R1 to a planned unit development per the site plan. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions should mayor and city council approve the rezoning request. It is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet these minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance with the city orders.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, at this time I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the request of rezoning.
You have a motion to approve it. Over.
Second.
Second. I have a second. Any further discussion by council?
Mayor, are there any updates as to any changes being made DOT or development-wise? As of late?
Lon, do you have anything on that? I saw your email, so.
Okay, the DOT and myself were to meet out at the site at that intersection today, and due to sickness and a possible COVID, he could not meet me. So we did a virtual meeting, and we discussed several, several options around that intersection. One thing is that if the city so chooses, we could lower the speed limit on Philadelphia Road from 35 to 25. That is a city street. That's up to the city. In our discussion, I brought up rubble strips. Is that possible on a city street? The DOT has nothing to do with that. We could apply those if the city chooses. We could also, if you go up and down 515, you see signs that has a picture of a traffic light. And we brought that up to the DOT, and he said if we want to put those on city streets as a reminder that you're coming into a traffic light, that's also a city use. We talked about the turning lane, the right turn to go into this project. DOT specifications on 515, and he also said he would recommend this to be at that area. It would have a 200-foot, or excuse me, it's 150-foot. 100-foot would be for actual cars if they were more than two or three to line up to turn into the right. And then there would be a 50-foot taper into that. So a total of 150-foot. The developers are going to have to, and this is strictly a contract between the DOT and the developers. The city is not involved in this. They will have to pay $1 per cubic yard for any dirt that is moved off the DOT right wing. And that will be an agreement between the DOT and the developer. And for any tree that is cut, they will pay $10 per linear foot for any tree. That goes to the DOT in a contract with them. That does not involve the city. And that was about all that we discussed as far as any precautions that the city or the contractor could make. I did send these suggestions and items to the developer. They said if the city chooses to do these things, that it will be at their expense, that they would be obligated to do the things on this list.
When you say their expense?
The developers will put this in at their expense, yes. Right? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to include any and all DOT suggestions if the city so wishes.
So I have a motion to approve this stipulation as stated by Councilmember Kirk Raffield. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. The motion carries. The request is granted. Item B is consideration and approval of hospitality study agreement. At least today, this group is the community executive developer management with Georgia Power. Recommends our city to do a hospitality study to further our opportunities of securing hotel lodging in our community. The cost is $15,000. Georgia Power will pay $12,500 of that cost. The remainder will be split between the city using our hotel motel tax, and the remainder also from the county using theirs. Counsel, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve this hospitality study.
Sure move.
And a second, please.
Okay.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And we will have a hospitality study. Item C is consideration approval of the scope of work done on Jeanette Drive project. I'm going to ask David Hall to bring this to us to start with.
Evening, Mayor, council. Tonight, I'd like to bring to you all a change of the, one of the things that's been on the budget, which was a well, no, this part was not on the budget. This was originally put in for the engineer work that was going to be done on Jeanette Drive. And what the mayor and myself have looked at is going in and doing the water line. Excuse me, I lost my voice at the hospital last night, working on that water line. But we were looked at going ahead and doing the water line work on Jeanette Drive and not waiting on getting it done for the storm drain and stuff. It's going ahead and reaching in and doing the work to be done on Jeanette Drive. And we have attained bids for this, to get this water line, go ahead and get the water line installed on Jeanette Drive. And the bids, I think, y'all have copies. Do we get them copies?
We've not got copies.
Okay, the copies, or the numbers are Lawrence Charlie was a bid of $25,000 for the labor on Jeanette Drive. And Phil Stansfield, Stan Coe, was $24,665. At this time, I'd like to ask y'all to approve Stan Coe to do the labor and installation on the water line at Jeanette Drive.
So, counsel, for a little more discussion on this, it was our engineer's request, the engineer EXP requested that we decouple the water line from the project itself in hopes that by doing so, and now are you going to be doing, are they going to be doing any cleanup out there?
We were going to look at that separate after we get the water line done. Then we were going to bring that back before y'all again.
So this is just strictly to go set the water line?
Yes.
And at this point also, we would need to send letters out to the two bidders on this telling them that we have declined that bid. So that is a part of this request that we're doing tonight. Only fair to them to let them know that we're going back, we will come back and rebid this project. Now, the question becomes how much cleanup that will be done out there? And as to that, I think that if we do the cleanup, are you talking about doing that with our crews?
Yes.
Potentially renting some equipment to do that with?
Yes, yes. I like, once we can get the water line out of the way, then we can go in with our own crews and rent the equipment and get all the materials and stuff out of the way.
So then we would have a cleaned-up project for a bid for someone coming and installing the part of the
Yes, sir.
remaining part of that project.
Yes, sir. I think that's
In your opinion, is this the quickest way for us to get this done?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and the water line that we have over there too is not really dependable.
We know that we have pressure issues, and we're trying to get that taken care of, so.
Yes.
Is this going through committee?
Yes.
The new lines will help the pressure over there?
Yes.
Yes, this was talked about in committee, correct?
Yes.
About Jeanette being
Breaking the water out, correct?
Yes.
The, and I don't know, do we have a motion? Are we supposed to be talking on this, or I guess it's all right? I would entertain a motion that we approve this, and then we can approve for discussion, and then we can have a further discussion.
I'll make a motion. We approve this.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Go on. I got
Discussion?
There's some state money involved with this. Does this affect the state monies in any way?
The engineer said that he thought it would still be taken through state monies that they would be fine as long as there was a bid process that went through, and there was, that he felt like that it would still be okay through Lon, it's not here no more.
Please go on.
Through FEMA or GMA.
The grid. Yeah, the LME money, okay.
Is that for the water portion separate from the
The bridge?
Bridge portion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
There also be potentially federal annual state dollars available for the bridge portion?
Possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but this is clear and separate?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the confusing part, and I appreciate the work on it, is that for the general public, the process we have gone through to get to this point, to use the professionals, to get the information we have before us today, and we go about it the right way, it does take a little bit longer, but in the end, it is completely worked. So I appreciate your diligence on this.
Yes, and the bids, you know, according to the engineer, were way out of line. And that's the reason we're going to, the mayor's idea was to go in, get the water line out of the way, get the materials out of the way, get all constructed, the pavement, the asphalt, all of that. Get all of that moved out of the way, and then once all of that's moved out of the way, you've got a cleaner project for somebody to bid at.
Any further discussion?
Acceptable bid.
Hold on one second. Let me get this Do you need to do something else on bids?
No.
I think it would have been included in that motion, Jim. Would the low bid be included in that motion?
Yeah, the motion is we accept the low bid.
No, the motion is not acceptable bid. The motion is to decline
Decline the bid.
And we're going to go back and redo this ourselves, separate, decouple.
I apologize.
No, we're not accepting that bid.
So the motion is for declining the bids and going forward with us cleaning it up?
With the low contractor to come in and replace the water line.
So you're rebidding the water lines?
We're rebidding the water lines and then we're going to rebuild the project when we get this cleaned up.
Got you.
So now, I think at this point I have a motion and a second. To accept this bid for $24,665 from Stan Coe. Any further discussion by council?
We're supposed to deny the
Decline the bids. Both bids.
We said that. Decline the bids and accept the bid to replace the water line for $24,665.
And those other bids were in the nature of $800,000, is that right?
$608,000 was the low.
Okay.
Which was about $300,000, more than we had anticipated. It's more than the engineer anticipated, and the engineer says, we don't need to accept that bid. It's too high.
That was more than the state anticipated.
Correct. So I agree with the engineer on that. So I still have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And you will go get your water fixed.
Mayor, also, we need to approve for materials, the pipe material to do the project. That's just for the installation labor. Now, we'll need to approve for the pipe and material. We have two bids. Do pipe and material. We'll do that this time.
We can do that. This is part of this project.
Okay. We have consolidated pipe and supply at $16,370. And Fortaline Water Works has $16,238.18. I'd like to accept a little bid of the Fortaline Water Works of $16,238.18.
Can't get much closer than that, can you?
Oh, I understand. That's so much worry. Okay, counsel, at this point I entertain a motion that we approve the pipe material for this water line project.
Let's see if I can do better on this one. Make a motion. We approve the low bid on purchase of pipe for the Jeanette Street project.
Will be the $16,238.18.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Now, you actually got some material to work on it. Thank you, sir. Don't go anywhere. Item D, consideration approval of redefining the scope of work for zone meters. David, I'd like you to bring this to us.
This is already in the budget for the zone meters. The $25,000 through McKimmon Creek. And we would just like to change the scope of work from doing the zone meters to allowing McKimmon Creek, who does all of our leak detection work, to go ahead and finish their leak detection work, which would be about approximate to what y'all had budgeted for the zone meters, which is about $25,000.
So why are you wanting to change this over?
Because we're, part of the zone meter work is going to involve a lot of the city staff helping as far as the installation of the zone meters and stuff. And it's going to be substantially more than the $25,000. And we just think that something needs to be looked at next year. And with the money available, though, just go ahead and finish the leak detection. We've done about half the system already, so this will finish up the other half, or probably 65% that's left will be done with the $25,000. So the zone meters still can be done, but I think it's going to be more of something that needs to be started under here in a year.
Money's already been allocated and budgeted. What we're trying to do is shift the use of those funds from where they were into a new category.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In committee, we also discussed the fact that the major remaining portion of the zone meters is the city itself. And there are a lot of loop constructions that we, over the last several decades, were not appropriately mapped. And we don't know where they all are as of yet. And even though we're working through that very diligently and mapping those, putting a zone meter on a system that has loops in it is not going to be helpful. So that also, we discovered that, and that's also why we want to channel this money to to another source.
Okay. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion that we approve transferring of this money from originally zone meters over to leak detection.
Second.
Counsel, second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. And the motion carries. David? I'd like for you to tell us about this consideration approval item D for sewer maintenance smoke testing.
Yes, and Brandon had put this in the budget pertaining to the smoke testing and cleaning of sewer lines. What we had hoped to do was go in and get a small preview of what it would be like to have the smoke testing done on a certain part, or maybe one of the worst parts of the system. And once that's done, kind of give us an idea of which way we need to continue on in the future to smoke test the whole system. And this will pay for 39,000 feet of smoke testing of our sewer collection system.
Counsel, this has already been budgeted as $15,000.
Yes, sir.
And at this point, we're actually just giving David permission to proceed with what we had already planned. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve shifting $15,000 for the sewer maintenance testing.
Second.
And a second, please.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion by council?
David, is this where the original term of blowing smoke came from?
Well, I can hold by everybody in the fire department, everybody, because everybody's going to, you know, there's stuff on fire.
Is there ever some fire?
Any further serious questions, Dr. O'Neal?
I'm a real smart man.
All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same. I just, thank you, David. I know that was a long stretch to you, but you did a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's, that's the
Lindsey, Lindsey, then back to him.
Oh, yeah, well, he can sit down now and get ready. Okay, item D, consideration approval of a new back account for the Downtown Development Authority. Ms. Lindsey, if you would, please bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. So staff is seeking approval to open a new account with United Community Bank for our Downtown Development Authority. We'd also like to add Mr. Jim Looney as an additional signer. Currently, we have Jack Dunn and Amy Lee. They'll still be signers, but we were just wanting to add. While we're doing this, the DDA is now a blended component of the general fund. So moving it with United would just make it a lot smoother for us to be able to move the funds around.
Thank you. All two signature checks. Counsel, I entertain a motion. Motion to approve the account. And where are you opening that account?
United Community Bank.
United Community Bank.
And I have Jim Looney as a signer. And I mean, Jack.
And that's some signatures to that.
Second.
And a second, please. Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council?
And Ms. Lee, I know she's their secretary. Is she also their treasurer? Do you know?
She's not.
She's not?
No.
Who is?
I believe Dave Gardner.
He is?
He's the treasurer. Okay. Still no issue.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion carries. Second. Item C is consideration and approval to install 3,000-foot of C900 pipe in Hickory Cove. And I know this is going to be a detailed discussion.
Yes, Mayor, council, we'd like to go into the Hickory Cove area where we're having presently a problem with a two-inch main that was laid back in the early 2000s in the Hickory Cove area. But it's a far two-inch main, and it's continuing on the brink. And we already have the 3,000 feet of six-inch main. And I think we'd like to get the United's good approval from y'all to obtain bids to install that 3,000 feet of six-inch main and a couple of fire hydrants in the Hickory Cove area. Just to obtain the bids, and then we'll bring it back to you. We don't have any bids to sign.
Counsel? I make a motion that we take bids on the installation from Hickory Cove Grove.
Have a motion to approve the seeking of bids for the 3,000-foot of C900 pipe in Hickory Cove. And a second?
For discussion, second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion by council?
I guess this would fall into the category of infrastructure maintenance. David, is that what you call that? Okay, thank you, sir.
So going along with the infrastructure maintenance and
So going along with the infrastructure maintenance and improvements here, I want to be very clear. I appreciate your effort on this because inheriting this piece is very difficult to understand upfront initially. So it's important for the public to understand, especially those on social media, that this in the early two thousands was installed via money from a grant, I believe. And there were requirements in place that fire hydrants had to be present. Although the homeowners understood the city only did this to provide drinking water. Correct, there was no fire suppression. So the two-inch line at the time made sense. Now it does not, so we're going to go back, and we're going to correct the error from the early two thousands and enhance that infrastructure. So I greatly appreciate that. Does the public in that area understand now, and Chief Roper, this may come into play with you, the educational component of what will be expected of those fire hydrants? Will there be fire suppression? Is that our service delivery area?
It is not. That is Picking County's service delivery area of fire. It's our water line, but it's county protected.
Yes. And increasing this line, will that improve water, fire suppression? Or will that purpose still not be served?
Purpose not be served.
Okay. So my question, and this is a.
But this is a step toward that.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, as long as we do the educational component, I believe the general public can certainly support that. I know the homeowners will.
Could there be a tank required to obtain, you know, fire suppression? You'd have to, the tank, yes.
Yes.
Because they're a hundred feet higher than our elevated tanks. Our elevated tanks are sixteen oh seven above sea level. And Roger Schultz, the ground elevation in his house is about seventeen thirty. So we have no way of, the only way to do it would be to have a tank.
Tank up there.
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out, it's important for the public to know. I appreciate your work on this. So thank you.
But this is a step towards, you're going to have to have the bigger main even with the tank.
On a scale, just ballpark, what's a new tank cost these days?
It's about probably a dollar and a quarter a gallon.
Okay.
You would need probably at least a hundred thousand gallons.
Okay.
Steve would know more about that than me, but I would say at least a hundred thousand gallon tank. Thank you, sir.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Kirk, I agree. I think it's important for us to educate the public in knowing what they're getting as far as that. And we appreciate your work on it.
We'll only get payment that grant. So when you.
Thank you, Lord.
Knows what the purpose was. Excuse me, the purpose of the grant.
The original grant.
It was to get drinking water up there because their wells were going bad with magnesium and different things. And some of them were, several of them went dry. And they came down here, and the city and the county worked together at that time to allow the city, because we could get to it quicker than the county could at that particular time. So we did put it up there to get them some drinking water and something they could use in their house.
Perfect. Simple signage may be the educational piece, David. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I have a motion and a second to approve. David, hopefully go out and seek bids for this three thousand foot in Hickory Cove. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Item H, is consideration of approval of a twenty twenty-one audit engagement letter with Ruston CPAs. And we'll ask for a necessary review of the records from there too.
I've reached out to Sam Leidmer last week about engagement letters. Part of the requirement for the USDA grant, that we have an engagement letter on hand. We're about a month early, but that's okay. And they did turn in the quote same as last year. And if we have to have a single audit, it would be an additional five thousand. And a single audit is if we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money. I don't think we're going to do that. But we might.
And your single quote is for twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes. And we're very satisfied with the audit, and they did good work. It's a good relationship, so I asked for counsel's approval. And to go ahead, we'll be again.
Counsel, we've had a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one audit engagement letter with Ruston CPA.
Second.
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 Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. And we have your approval. Item I, and this makes me very, very happy. Consideration of approval of line specialty shop license for First Mountain Tasting Room to be located at sixty-nine North Main Street. And Lindsay, if you will, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So last month, I came to you with the same business. And they were going to be located, I think at thirty-five South Main Street. And they withdrew their application for that location about a week, maybe a couple of days to a week after y'all approved it. So they did contact me last week, and they decided to move their location to sixty-nine North Main Street, which is the Jack's Coffee Shop old location. So they put in the application for that, so we're just asking if we can re-advertise for the new location.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Second.
Second.
Just go.
I was just going to ask, because the background and everything, it already been completed while we're doing this, changing locations.
Yes, all we're doing is changing locations.
So this is a new business building, empty building. Thank you very much.
Yes. Just go a couple more.
Yes, a handful.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. And Lindsay, you may tell them that we are ready for that.
To advertise.
Item J, is consideration of approval of a Veterans Day parade. And. Very quick.
I would like to call on Sergeant Bishop to come forth to give us details. If you don't mind, sir.
Your honor, member counsel, I'm the adjutant for the one forty-ninth American Legion post here. And it came about that we didn't really understand how we could hold a parade that she held every year. So when I came to ask for the permit, it was, we had no vehicle to do that. So that's why I'm coming forward to ask for that permission, so we can hold the parade not only this year, but in the following years.
Parade on Veterans Day.
Aye, sir.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Counsel, I entertain a motion, we approve this Veterans Day parade.
Salute.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion by counsel?
We are talking about one-year approval, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which will make sure. I thought I heard you say you were looking.
I did, but I want you to remember for next year.
Oh. I don't think that would be a problem. We'll try to get you.
And Matt, you know, you've already been notified with everything with it. Thank you.
Rap wise, where's the rap planned out for the parade, sir?
Sir.
What's the rap?
What's your rap? For the parade?
Oh, the rap is down Main Street, and then we'll call it, it'll culminate at the Veterans Memorial Hall, where we'll have a dedication there.
Right.
My name's saying that goes from South Screen down Main, even Carol, Mark Woodfield, down St. Gall, and the leading point.
Okay.
What the others said.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sarge.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both saying. Got it. Item J, is consideration of approval for engineering service for Jasper Fire Department additions. And we have for that twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. It's what they have come back and said is going to be this is CPL for their professional services. Funds are budgeted in the twenty twenty spot. And we are asking for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, please. Second. Motion and a second to approve for the engineering services for Jasper Fire Department. Any further discussion by counsel?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind counsel that this is for engineering, construction buildings to provide, eventually provide living space, improvements in living space for the firefighters. What we're actually looking to build is office space that will loosen up an area in the existing building for additional living space and facilities to support that living space. This is not a larger bay for vehicles. This is to take care of.
It's renovation of our existing building, but this has nothing to do with anything that we might be proposing in the future at other locations such as Allen five fifteen. This is strictly renovation of the existing building. We won't.
Yes, sir.
Craig, I think it's also important to note that this administration, through the twenty twenty spot negotiations, made sure that our public safety was covered and that these monies are a direct result of this administration's dedication to our public safety professionals. This will benefit indirectly. Correct.
As was infrastructure in parks and recreation. Correct?
Yes. That was this administration.
So a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. And the motion carries and CPL can just pay. So item L, which we penciled in, I believe, Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Is about Dixie Street. So I'm going to ask you to bring this to counsel.
At the last council meeting, you may remember, we presented a retiring chief, police chief level with a street sign. And the intent was to change the name of Dixie Street to G G Level. Lanes Street, anybody remember which was it?
Street.
Street. Thank you. But we didn't, we couldn't vote on it then. We were just presenting it to Greg, trying to surprise him with it. If we had voted on it before that, would not have been much of a surprise. So I'd like to have consideration of changing the name of Dixie Street to G G Levels Street.
A motion to change Dixie Street to G G Levels Street.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion by counsel?
Well worth it.
I think it's a great honor for someone.
We'd better vote to do it after we get to the sign.
Well, and they are the only one. There's nobody else on that street, so there's no.
No interest in having this changed.
Every other meeting. Okay. Bank. You have the credit union, you're not being notified on one vacant lot.
That vacant lot, they kept their.
The parking lot.
Their parking lot.
Their parking lot.
Yeah, when they were there, they just kept that address, so they don't have to be notified. Pursue their management.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. And we have a name change. Committee reports. Development Committee, council members, Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Reddick.
So we've had a couple of our consultant meetings to consider our moratorium and making good progress there in identifying some key strategic planning issues related to zoning, not just along five fifteen, but also in the entire city. We've talked about simplifying our categories for zoning. We're currently looking at the projected projects along the five fifteen corridor where we have some larger tracks that we want to make sure that we have a grasp on their potential for rapid expansion. And see if we can possibly mitigate that. As related to any projects, I think it's important to remember that the current project that was approved might have applied well before the moratorium. The application for that project was in May, and we did not install or put the moratorium in place until August. And there still seems to be some confusion about the fact that the moratorium is only against residential rezoning, nothing else. So right by used properties that are already zoned in our city, we continue to get activity on. And I guess that's about it. That, committee?
Kirk, you have your.
I second that. We've had some really good meetings with our group and CPL, and I'm excited to see the progress we've made through conversation. Everyone being on the same page, and do what's best for the city.
Street and Parks Committee, I have council members, Ann Staley and John Faust's absence, so Ann will.
I don't have a lot on the park update this time. We're looking at a couple of things and working through some ideas on them. So I'm going to hold off on presenting those until we finish that research.
Thank you. Administration Committee, council members, Tim Looney and Ann Staley.
Counsel, we're still working on the employee handbook. I believe David's got a copy of it and review. I would suspect, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but we probably have that ready to be discussed at the next meeting.
That's the goal. I hope we make that.
It depends on what else we throw at you between now and then, I understand. But work still continues on that. We did talk a little bit about the budget at our workshop last week. And we do have a schedule for continuing that.
That's three minutes?
No, I forgot to turn it off. Some people do more. So we have a schedule for that. I think it's been distributed. I am sure that will take a lot of our time in the next forty-five days or so. And Beverly and Lindsay's time. We got those. So that's.
It's already taken a lot of their time out. It's going to take a lot more.
Thank you, sir. Water Waste Park Committee would be council members, Don Faust, who is absent, and Dr. Sunny Proctor. Will Dr. Proctor update us on that?
Yes, sir. Waste water, we anxiously await the announcement that our, the potential for the announcement that our discharge in Long Swamp Creek will be approved. We've been given a date that that announcement would be made. Might even be today. At least that's what the announcement was, we were told would be the announcement. What that means is that we could then move forward with our eight million dollar expansion and possibly get bids out by as soon as April for the expansion, which will double our wastewater treatment plant. And so that's exciting. With respect to water, I do know that they have buried a fair amount of the pipe over on D B, on the. L white. And are working on that project. And that's, again, a project that we've been waiting on engineering for. We got the engineering, and we were waiting on supplies. And those supplies, I think, arrived last week. With respect to water, I think there are some opportunities that we're working on that are not yet quite ready for public input on. Think that may be coming fairly soon. And continue to work with our neighboring counties and our own county to make sure that our water needs are met. I believe that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Police Fire Committee, council members, Kirk Reddick and Jim Looney.
I have recently met with all the department heads. Things seem to be going well in their department. I expect the same out of the other departments. Really proud of the way they provided for Halloween trick or treating. It was wonderful seeing the interaction out there, and PD and fire out with kids. They even had the fire truck dressed up, so that was good.
So I'll ask for a little bit more input on the Halloween since we were out there in the group. I was happy to see about four or five of our council members there. So what did you hear from the citizens there as far as the safety goes?
I heard from a four-year-old till about ten o'clock last night. I'm a sugar guy.
Because that was very close.
I was dad yesterday. It was wonderful. My wife and I enjoyed having a safe place in downtown, see all of our friends and the merchants, outlook safety, all the businesses. It was wonderful.
Thank you. I admit that I've heard quite a few people talk about how they felt safe bringing their children downtown. So that might be something that we expand in future years.
And I think the citizens appreciate the police department. And I think the citizens appreciate the police department and the fire department out there, they do feel safer with them out there, and, and we know it's a lot of hard work, but we, we appreciate it too, y'all taking time to make it extra safe for these kids out there.
An area of discussion would be over hills for Halloween, Chief Dawkins has approached me about that, we did discuss it briefly. He is planning already for next year.
It probably is, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you that if you're a fat guy with a white beard, no matter what other people may be saying about you, put a red hat on and the kids love you, so.
Oh, yeah. There were numerous kids that said, "Hey, son of a wolf."
He was a boy.
Yeah, with my grandson, he came by, "Will not look at me because Santa Claus was playing." Thank you. And Wes Beverly for a financial report this time?
We provided the usual memo, but also provided a complete budget report that we pulled this abbreviated information from, and I felt like that was needed for, you know, our discussions about a minute budget. If you look down through, you can see we're, we're missing the mark a little bit with revenues and with expense. It's a, it's a good miss on revenue. And SPOST, we've got the amounts available for SPOST, both 2014 and 2020. And those amounts are pretty much accounted for in the 2022 budget. If you look on the SPOST work paper and the draft budget, you can see how those monies are expected to be spent. And collections are up with SPOST, so SPOST is up. Last month, Lindsay was 84,000, and if you recall, we budgeted 65,000 a month.
Right.
And it has been above that every single month. So that's part of the, the budget amendment is to change those, those amounts.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Too much. Development report from Lime Waters, who has done so well tonight. Thank you, sir.
Give, we've issued five building permits, 122 building inspections, seven solar erosion inspections, three stormwater inspections, eight animal cubs, one meeting with FEMA, three pre-branding and application meetings, three pre-construction meetings, two zoning and assessments with CPL meetings, four business licenses issued, and some of the staff is still wanting to train themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
File report from Chief, Steve Roper.
Good evening, mayor, council. For the month of October, the city's fire department responded to 154 emergencies. Those were no residential or commercial structure fires, two vehicle fires, no grass or brush, 22 motor vehicle accidents with injuries, 104 emergency medical responses, and 26 others, as always, that's anything that was not mentioned. But our inspection office looked at four sets of plans for construction or renovation and conducted 22 inspections.
Thank you, sir. And police report, listen, the last time I called Matt Doff, Chief, I got a little bit, a little bit of a headache, but Chief Doff, would you please come up and give us a sample?
Even, Mayor and Council, might do this a little different, I don't think I have enough breath, like Chief Level Red.
Right.
Jasper Police Department answered 845 calls for service in the month of October. There were 63 motor vehicle accidents. There were 145 citations issued by the Jasper Police Department. Majority of those were speeding and other violations, there was nine DUIs in those. GST was responsible for 53 of those citations, and the total citations issued was 198. Warrants issued were 63. That range from theft of auto, we had a couple of trafficking methamphetamine cases made, shoplifting, which is a very common thing, possession of firearm within the school safety zone, and all the way down to obstruction of law. Miss Lang is called, alarm calls were 56, there were 13 disorderly calls, 20 suspicious activity calls, and 10 domestic dispute calls. And I'd like to add to the Halloween thing, I was happy to see it go very well considering we had it last year. I do have some other things in mind with Alver Hills, it's kind of crazy. Hopefully we can get those worked out by next year.
Definitely, next year in progress, thank you.
Good job, Matt, you're done, man.
Andrew, I'm glad you didn't miss that, Andrew.
Ladies and gentlemen, this time we're going to go into executive session.
From going into executive session, would you want to do a public service announcement on the change in polling location, and tomorrow being the election day? We've been doing that every month, and if you want me to do it, I can.
I would like to see you do this. I do enough of this, sir.
This year, the city changed the polling location to the building that's next to the police department that's 55 Dixie Street. We put up signage about it, but we're trying to word out so that everybody that wants to vote knows where to go to vote. And of course, tomorrow is election day, and the polls will open at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow, and the polls will be open until 7:00 p.m. tomorrow. And on behalf of the mayor and council, we encourage all the citizens of the town to get out and vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well done, sir. And at this point, I would, we are going to go into executive session, so I can't tell you how long that will be, but we put purpose of discussing legal and personnel, so.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
You're second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session, a five-minute recess.
Andrew, I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both saying, we are back in record session, the motion.
Motion to approve consent order, as presented.
Have a motion to approve, consent order is second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both saying. Motion carries. And can a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, go on.